Twelve, two thousand eighteen, roll call Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Magsman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here, have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. As we reflect on our actions, I'd like to remember in our prayers, Mr. Burrow Buck, a longtime citizen of Blackhawk County, a World War Two veteran, and a longtime advocate and volunteer at this Cedar Valley Food Bank. Please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received?
So moved.
Men?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments, anybody from the public, like, morning, well, comment on anything other than what's on the agenda? Go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead, give your name and address, please.
My name is Sue Vogel, I live in Waterloo, two-two-two Terrace Drive. First of all, I would like to thank you for your dedication and your hard work that you do for the citizens of Blackhawk County, it is greatly appreciated. And second, I would like to encourage you that while you were reviewing the bids for the, from the two out-of-state businesses to take over Country View, that you also set up a committee to review what can be done to keep Country View county-owned. They are owed over five hundred thousand dollars, that should be some kind of effort to try to get that money to get them paid. They also, when we have, when, we have, I understand, two people who are doing a good job there right now for the day-to-day operations. We need a director who has mental health care background to be hired. There is a list of things that can be done that we should be doing before trying to privatize it. I understand that there is funding through two thousand nineteen for Country View. Privatizing is not really a good idea, the business's bottom line is profit, and to get profit, care suffers and staffing suffers. We have an example of our own state privatized healthcare failing us. I for one would be willing to have my taxes raised. I think we should do everything that we can to keep it open and vote for a change in the legislation in two thousand eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to claims and payments, this is board of supervisors approve expenditures for the county.
The county's expenditures this week total three hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and three dollars and twenty cents, three-seven-five, five-zero-three, point-two-zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution to approve expenditures for Country View care facility.
Country View's expenditures this week total three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents, three-five-four, zero-seven-one, point-seven-two. This includes about two hundred and seventy-five thousand for May benefits.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion?
Details of how close we are to the county having to add funds to cover the cost of Country View?
So, after we pay these bills today, their balance will be about two hundred and fifty-three thousand in the bank account, and it just depends on when they receive their money from Medicaid. But I think that we will be able to make it through the end of June, the end of this fiscal year, without transferring any additional funds.
Is that covering the repairs that have been coming up, the roof?
Um, we haven't, no, we haven't had those bills yet.
Water here and bricks and all that?
No, we haven't had those bills yet.
So that's gonna come out of where?
Well, hopefully it will come out of Country View's account.
For the record, too, I've heard it multiple times, that five hundred thousand dollars that the county's waiting on, that's an in-out thing, it's been spent, it was for services, so when it comes in, it's already been spent, so it's not like we have a windfall. It's something that we're in a hole for five hundred thousand for services that were done.
It's been recorded as revenue, yes, so it's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning.
Morning, Board, Brian Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. Our crews are out on the gravel roads, blading this week with some of our recent moisture. We're also continuing to mow on our gravel and the paved roads. Our bridge crew is still currently up on Marquee Road, completing some of the culvert replacements in advance of our paving next year. We do anticipate that those areas being patched with asphalt later this week, and we should have that road reopened until we have some bridge repairs later in the fall.
We have any damage over the weekend because of the weather?
We do have some, some roads that have been closed that are close to the Cedar or close to the Wopsey. I believe the water is still up on some of those, we'll have to assess some of them. I don't believe there's anything major, no.
Right, sounds good, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any other elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for June fifth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, this is a resolution, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Incentive agenda by resolutions?
So moved. Second.
Moving second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements, this is a resolution, that the road maintenance agreement between Blackhawk County and Washburn Wind Energy LLC for maintenance, construction and repair of public infrastructure affected by the construction, maintenance or operation of the wind energy facility in Blackhawk County be approved and direct to chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
Morning again, Brian.
Uh, this is an agreement that our office went through and worked out with Washburn Wind Energy, was sent over to Pete for review as well. The criteria and stuff that's outlined in here are above and beyond our current ordinance. This does allow us to request dust control or rock to be placed within a certain time period on any roads that may have some damages part of that construction. Something we will be working with them as we move forward on, the ordinance does state that there will be a pre-construction and a post-construction survey of the roads and the haul routes that they'll be using. We, their, Washburn Wind Energy will be responsible for hiring a third-party engineering firm to do that work. Any damage that is noted at the end of construction is their responsibility to repair or replace.
Thank you, Brian.
Ryan, have you worked with other counties that have had experience with wind farm construction and, and how their road system has fared under those, under their ordinance?
I know we've talked with some other counties, we also had some recent experiences here with Mid-America and their contractors a summer or two ago on the north side of the county. And, and we did work out some locations where, where their contractors were supplying rock to repair some of the roads. We didn't have an agreement in place ahead of time with a, with a project like that. It's a little different being a, a utility being installed in there right away, so some of this is just some of the lessons we've seen from our own experience here in our county, too.
Thank you.
Frank, to answer your question, I did follow up with someone in, one of the supervisors in Grendy County, who mentioned that they had experience with RPM and they had returned the roads to the previous condition or better, so in their county.
Pete, was there anything you saw in there?
No, 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 it's, it's a very well drafted agreement and it is helpful to Blackhawk County.
Any other questions? This is a resolution?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the contract between Blackhawk County and Kramer and Associates, Grimes Iowa, for project BHS C double oh seven, Finchford Road Bridge, we have on C fifty-five over the West Fork of the Cedar River, at a cost of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on this?
Again, it states this is on Finchford Road, right in Finchford, pretty much at the intersection of Finchford and Winslow Road, or the West Fork River. The, our engineer estimate on the project was about nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, so overall it was a very good bid. This will be funded with eighty percent federal funds and twenty percent for our local match. We do anticipate this construction starting around mid-July and staying in place for the remainder of the construction season.
Sounds good, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other business, this is a motion that requests for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Beeter, IT Director, be approved and direct to chair to sign for same, purchase of three tablets, two laptops, office software and docking stations for seven thousand one hundred eight dollars and eighty-nine cents from CDWG to be used at the Health Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a motion that the appointment of Heidi Warrington as a representative for the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Commission be approved effective July first, two thousand eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Moving second, discussion? Morning.
Aye.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Morning, Board, I'm Jeff Griffin from the Commission for VA, and wanted to introduce our recommendations for the openings we have, and that is Heidi Warrington and Glenn Keith.
I'd just like to say that after thirty-four years, both Reserve and active duty in the Army as a nurse, five wars in forty-one countries, it's a pleasure to be back home as a hometown girl and to give my efforts and my connections and my passion for improving healthcare for veterans here in Blackhawk County and be part of the solution. I read your vision, values and what's going on here in Blackhawk County, it's exciting and I consider it an honor to be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board, I want to thank you for this opportunity. Spent twenty-five years between the Marine Corps Reserves and the Active Duty Army, recently retired, been living here in the community since two thousand thirteen, it's made it my home. Very familiar with the veterans organizations here within the county between running the UNI ROTC program and now running the East High Junior ROTC program. I want to be an advocate for veterans, I'd like to post nine-eleven veterans as we're here, and my dad, a retired military and a Vietnam-era veteran, you know, I want to be an advocate for all veterans, and I think it's a great opportunity to continue to give back to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just real quick, what's exciting about these two, and Craig and Tom probably already aware of this, and for the public, what's exciting about Colonel Warrington and Lieutenant Colonel Keith is they're field-grade officers, so what's exciting for this county is these two gives us direct access to the Governor's Office, also gives us direct access to Senator Ernst, Senator Grassley and Congressman Blum. Even though I work with them, this really helps give us direct access to the State House in Des Moines, Governor's Office and the federal government, so it's kind of exciting for this county, so, thank you.
Since you got contact with the Governor, would you invite her to the Country View, please? Maybe she'd listen to you guys.
Okay, you got a motion?
Yeah. Yeah. Got a motion on the floor for the first one. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to appoint Glenn Keith as a representative of Blackhawk County Veterans. Moving to second, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Welcome on board.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your willingness to serve on the country.
Next is a resolution that the county auditor be authorized and directed to transfer one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from general fund to the self-insurance property liability fund for fiscal year eighteen as recommended by the Insurance Committee.
This is a recommendation from the Insurance Committee I met last week. It is budgeted.
Um, this going into a reserve account?
Yeah, what's the balance on that, Susan? We're getting up there pretty far, so we may want to start making decisions.
When we make this transfer, we'll have about nine hundred and forty thousand in that self-insurance fund, and it's been the strategy, the Insurance Committee started back in two thousand and seven, I believe, to increase that fund balance in order to assume more risk and have a higher deductible and lower premiums to save the county money.
And that was discussed at the meeting, whether or not we should transfer it if we were high enough, and I think we decided that it would best to discuss it during budget.
It'll be a good item next year of budget to determine if we want to, if there's a need for it at that time.
Sounds good. Have a motion and a second on the floor, this is a resolution?
I'll make, make a motion to approve.
Second.
This, all in favor, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from Don's Truck Sales Fairbank Iowa for the purchase of one truck for the fiscal year nineteen dis支of Secretary Rhodes with a bid of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars be approved and recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Ryan, I, I didn't have that figure down.
So yes, that, that, that is a little different, and I can go over that for you guys. We did receive four bids, Don's truck was not the low bid that was read. In reviewing the specifications, the, the two lowest bids did not meet the specs that we had put in the bid. Couple of things that were different, the, the truck box that will hold all of the tools and torches, they had proposed to be made of aluminum, we had specified a steel box. As part of that, too, we, the, the doors and a lot of the components of that, that box were to be a dual-wall construction, just be a little tougher, the aluminums were also a single-walled. And the bed that they were providing on those two bids as well, were also longer beds than what we had specified, so that would just change some of the geometry of that vehicle a little. The, the reduced price that you're seeing there from, from Don's is a little less than what they had originally had in their bid. Their bid did have one component to it that was a, a cost reduction option, and that was just to change the color in which they were painting the bed from a paint match to the cab to a, a standard black paint on the bed. So, we are proposing to take advantage of that slight reduction, it's just a color match of the bed from, from the cab, and that would be for that sixty-six thousand, seven hundred, as opposed to the sixty-eight thousand, or no, it was sixty-seven, nine-seventy-five, it was a little different.
It is over a little bit on the estimate.
Yeah, our estimate was sixty-five, yes.
Any other questions? So who are the two lower bids?
Uh, the two other bids that were McGrath and Rydel.
You did specify the material plus the length of the truck and the RFP.
Yes, yep, the bed length and the, the material. Primary reason for a lot of the material difference, if, if we have to perform any repairs or any alterations, our staff's able to cut, weld, modify things made of steel. Aluminum is a little harder, we don't have the capability of welding that. Also, steel is just going to be a tougher material, this is going to be a, a vehicle that's in and out of all of our construction sites, so.
Any other questions? Have a motion on the floor?
Yes. Yes.
This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a motion that deterrent for right closure of the bridge over Beaver Creek on Butler Road between Westbrook and Beaver Valley Road due to the increased overweight traffic be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
This states this bridge is on Butler Road between Beaver Valley and Westbrook over the Beaver, over Beaver Creek. This is a bridge that was posted at seven tons on December twelfth by the Board last year. What we noticed in our inspections last year is we are having some of the timber pile deteriorate on that structure, and as a result of that, we did have to post it. We've received several reports from both the public and our greater operators in the area that there still is a large number of heavy truck traffic, agricultural traffic using that bridge, and, and just, I, I don't know if they don't notice the sign or they just don't want to drive around to a different route. We have tried to work with both motor vehicle enforcement from the state level and also our local sheriff's office on trying to improve some patrol in that area and, and work from the enforcement side of that. Unfortunately, it's not a really busy road, so it is very hard for them to focus too much of their time in that area. Currently, we are able to repair that bridge, we are planning repairs for the summer. We would like to have it temporarily closed until the repairs are made. We'd prefer it to stay in the condition it is so that we can repair it and not have to work with a longer-term closure of a possible failure of that structure.
Ryan, this is a, a bridge that's on the boundary between Butler and Blackhawk.
Yes, this is.
And they share costs and they have to pass the same.
Yes, they'll also have to pass the same ordinance, we are working with them on that, and I believe it's on their, their next agenda as well. We did some repairs to this structure, I mean, six or seven years ago, to the peers, and we did share in the costs with that with Butler County, they are aware of, of the issues, and we will be working through that same process with, with the new repairs this time as well.
Thank you.
Ryan, I think it was mentioned it was like a five-mile detour.
It is a bit longer of a detour, they would have to either go out to Union Road or over to New Hartford.
So from the notification process for residents, is there?
There are very few residents actually on that road, I think they're within that mile, there is three, and they're all on the south side of the bridge, so they are closer to town from that. We already have worked with the school districts on getting their, their bus routes rearranged with the bridge posting as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
What does the traffic count?
I would have to look, I mean, I imagine we're on the order of fifty or less within that road. And obviously, that's, that's going to fluctuate seasonally, so.
Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid between, or from Crescent Electric Supply Watu Iowa for floodlights at the jail with a bid of eight thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents be approved, direct to share to sign for same as recommended by Rory Geving, Maintenance Superintendent.
Good morning, Board, Rory Geving, Maintenance Superintendent. With this particular bid, we did receive five bids for this project. Crescent Electric is actually the third in line, there were two bids lower than Crescent Electric. After reviewing both of those bids, first one from Three, second one from Gray Bar, after reviewing both of those bids, they either did not meet the specifications of the lamp specified and/or they did not have good supporting information, for example, the lumbar fixture, which is the fixture we specified, which we have one installed on our facility over there now, it's been up there for about six months. According to several electricians, electrical companies, as well as these vendors, they all indicated that the lumbar fixture is a very proven fixture, it's installed in many places throughout Cedar Valley. So we felt it was in our best interest to stay with what we know, that's what we spec'd. We did allow the companies to provide an alternate, but again, after reviewing those, we feel it's in our best interest to stay with what we originally spec'd and what's been proven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any further questions or discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a discussion, possible board action, the internal movement for departments within the Pine Crest facility as recommended by the Space Committee.
Yes, since the notification was given to us that Targeted Case Management was going to vacate the Pine Crest facility, the Space Committee has met a, a couple of times with the primary goal of looking at the internal space within the Pine Crest facility and determining what would be in the county's best interest for any movement within that facility. What the, the committee has come up with is on fourth floor where Case Management was located, we, we are recommending that County Social Services move to that vacated space on fourth floor east. DHS, which has offices throughout the, the facility, they have approximately nine offices down on what we call first floor north, over by the VA Department. They also have offices on second floor west, which, part of the issue that we ran into with County Social Services' current location is potentially County Social Services' clients would walk through DHS's portion of their building to get to County Social Services. So what we wanted to accomplish was to get these departments grouped together, so their clients are coming to see them, they're going to their departments only and not having to walk through other entities. So we're accomplishing this by, again, moving County Social Services up to the previous location of Case Management, and moving DHS to County Social Services' existing location. So what we're looking at is, we, we are, we will be in the process of doing a phone upgrade with the IP phone system, so what we discussed in the committee, we would like to get that project completed before we make any movement. What I've committed is to have a RFP for that phone system completed by July one. We also committed to all relocations, relocations happening by December thirty-first. Some of the logistics we have to work out is just the physical movement of these departments and how we're going to do that with regards to labor and, and moving furniture and so forth. So that is the recommendation for the internal movements of that facility, and then what also came along with that is the VA Department has been looking to do some changes within their physical space as well, and they've asked me to look at some different options. One of the options was to build a, a, a building out behind Pine Crest and, and use that as a, I guess I'll call it drop-in center, community center, what have you, for veterans. The other option we looked at was DH, JCS on Lafayette Street. Third option was to use this vacated space that DHS will be moving out of, which is in, again, the first floor north. What we decided is that's probably going to be our best option, the least expensive option, and it will serve the, the needs that the VA is looking for, for a community center. So at this point, by doing these internal movements, that kind of sets the stage for this potential change within the VA Department. What needs to happen, though, is, is thoroughly looking at that area to see what walls could potentially be moved, modified, what have you. I know Kevin has presented kind of preliminary plan to the Space Committee outlining what he would like to see. Obviously, we would have to get a structural engineer in there to take a thorough look at that area, just to make sure that these things could, could happen, so that's at a cost. We haven't got to that point yet, what I indicated to VA Department is we need to get these internal movements done first, we need to get the areas cleared out on that north, first floor north, then we can take a hard look at what can happen with that area. Obviously, there would be a, a cost involved to that, and that's the point where I think Kevin might, you might want to speak to that if you would, I think you had some potential
You haven't mentioned.
Unraisings.
You haven't mentioned Cedar Valley Promise, are they moving?
They would be moving along with this as well. They would be moving along with this as well.
Where would they be going?
To either the first floor east. They have some vacated offices, DHS does, or they'd be going into the County Social Services area on second. So we have some options for them. Given that they're really in and out of that building quite frequently, the first floor east might make more sense for them.
They kind of work for DHS up on the third floor.
Yeah, and again, that's what we're trying to do is get DHS occupies all of the third floor. Once this move is complete, they would then occupy all of first floor east, and then they would occupy all of second floor east. So we're grouping them together, so they're.
What actually are you looking for today?
The internal movements to basically explain what we would like to proceed with as far as moving those departments, County Social Services and DHS. And then the VA Department, I just wanted to mention that by doing these movements, that opens us up for some opportunities there.
I would make a motion that we could begin that process, but by no way are we talking about any kind of spent monies on this. There hasn't been anything budgeted for this or anything, so approval strictly for the minutes is for the, to allow them to move.
Right.
Yeah.
The other ones, a different look at. We're going to have to look at that down the road.
And that's what, as a Space Committee, that's what we talked about, is get the internal movements taken care of, get the IP phone system installed, and that frees up that first floor north for some further discussion on how we would envision that looking.
Because you spent quite a bit of money over the last few years in some of those areas, carpet painting and so forth.
Right.
How soon, assuming we approve the movements today, how soon after this, do you think we could move forward with the structural engineers so that the VA Department knows whether that's going to be a viable option or not, so they can make their plans?
I would, obviously, it's not a budget item, but I could get proposals for that and present it to the board, and that can happen fairly quickly.
Okay.
Rory, what renovations do you have for fiscal year 2019?
For the Pinecrest facility, I have a restroom remodel on first floor. We're going to make that handicap accessible, so that would involve the two restrooms, the main restrooms, which the whole building would have access to those restrooms. We're not so much structural, but we are looking at increasing the security in that facility by adding some additional key fobs and additional camera system.
Anything with lighting?
We do have a project for lighting, but if you recall, that particular project was put on hold with the ceiling project here at the courthouse. We came over on budget, and so we had indicated we would hold off on Pinecrest if we had to forego that project for another year.
Thank you.
motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Do you want to repeat that, Mr. Little?
Strictly, this is authorizing the movement of the various offices at this time.
Moving to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close motion carried. Next is a motion to close the courthouse on June 21st from 11:00 to 4:30 for staff training.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a resolution to certify the outcome of the votes cast in Blackhawk County primary election Tuesday, June 5th, 2018.
We're going to do the campus, which is not very entertaining.
Free to go.
Yeah.
I can't wait myself.
How you doing?
That's nice.
Aren't you working?
First thing out of your mouth, aren't you working?
Oh, we got to do the campus for the election. It'd probably take, I don't know, she said a hundred sheets we got to sign?
I mean, you can take them. Oh, I think it's everybody.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't have to have them done at a certain time.
Huh? I'll be a fraud.
Could have done them yesterday.
You hang around in my office. Sit here, I don't care.
Can't sign them.
Yeah?
I would have been happy to sign them.
Big backs up behind the desk.
Good, how are you?
Hey, nice to meet you.
You not working today?
Everybody's worried about him not working today.
He's supposed to be working. Chris is my son.
You too.
Well, enjoy the day in spite of the fact that we all think he should be working.
Do you let him come up to your campsite at all?
Yeah, just to see if he can.
Got a drop-off spot and then he leaves?
You can have an extra set of keys for him up there.
Good to see you.
How long's this going to take, Karen?
That's what she's.
Hours.
I got to go to that funeral.
That's what she's thinking about.
It shouldn't take very long. I can't imagine.
Eleven, hour and a half?
Well, I got to be in Cedar Falls by 10:30. I got to be in Cedar Falls by 10:30.
That's only 9:30. We should be done.
I don't know if he'll get through all the signing stuff, but he can get out.
But you know where he'll be later, yeah.
So I'm going to go grab Joshua and Amy in the office, and then you can help raise his head. So then Grant, Susan, and Joshua, because I have four of us.
Let's get her going.
We should have a supervisor in each staff, so if somebody wants to move over by Susan, like, to go there and then tunnel over here, and then you can get Josh over by Frank. That work?
That's all right. What did you think of Rob yesterday?
No, you and me. You and me.
So you're going to have to be with Craig.
Yes.
So Chris and Susan, they make you two are together, and then we have Chris.
We've done it before, also. Yes. Am I with you or with Craig?
You're with me there together, and then Frank will be with Joshua.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to get rid of this poll this week.
Holy cow. Primary.
Huge, because we have Libertarian Party, but we didn't have candidates for Hartman.
I guess we're looking, first one is happy at 29, I believe.
So this first one is.
Who is that?
You seen it?
I don't know if I've ever seen this thing.
Barclay Lester Duncan.
Yeah, that's the first one.
So I have, I think, an hour.
Hi.
Better grab a chair for you.
I've only ever done that part before. I haven't done this, so.
Look at Maraby at 29.
29, 15, 10, 6, 0.
Yep, next one's Bolton, 5.
Read the numbers down.
5, 16, 29, 6, 5, 2, no riders.
Yep, Djar or whatever, 36.
36, 22.
Starting with.
Yep.
Lord 4, precinct 2.
Yep, Fitzgerald. 56, no riders.
First district, we have, I think, an hour for 78.
Okay.
29, 1, 15, zero writing.
31.
Then for Governor.
15.
Lason for 37. We got 56, 6, 24, 3, zero writing.
15.
And Jager.
Two.
We got 87, 31.
Or Secretary of State.
We have for.
17.
Ob San, 100.
Zero, zero.
We have for Fitzgerald, 100.
45.
And for, um, Gangen.
Treasurer?
101, 48.
Yep.
Tom Noah, 105, no writing.
Okay, so I should be here, but not too much, just in case someone's like, wait a minute.
Okay, so I'll just read the.
I'm with him, Kirk.
Okay. So.
I've heard about this process, but this is the first time.
Attorney General, 47.
83.
State Representative, 81.
So they're unofficial.
Yep. Have some.
So that part.
Most of the time.
I've never heard, has this ever, have you ever heard of like?
Okay. Get 5, 1 writing. Reynolds, 6, no writing.
Attorney.
Page 6, no writing.
Two.
Morseman, 5, no writing.
35. So 31?
Have you ever heard?
We get 2, 0, 3, 0 writing.
Secretary of State?
And then we have 1 for.
44. 27.
Attorney General, 1 write-in.
21.
And for the Senate District, 59, 1 write-in.
Okay, so.
And for Supervisor.
Four.
12, 5, 2 writing.
Eight. 1, 8, 10, 2. Zero. One, two months. 14. 39. We have 1 write-in. 10. Representative.
73. Okay. We get. Good, how are you doing? Maybe 87. 16, 3, 1 write-in. Treasurer, 10.
Recorder, 2.
East with. We get the county reporter.
1 write-in.
And the county attorney, 98. He's a really nice guy, very bright guy. Hard worker, power guy.
2, 4.
So we still have.
AG, 1 write-in.
More on here.
Senator, 2 write-in.
Libertarian. Okay, got 0. For Governor, we got 0, 3, 0. Secretary of State, 2. I guess that happens when you get them.
Was it?
Yeah, the State House.
Attorney of State, 1.
Representative.
Treasurer, 1. Secretary of Ag, 1. These are writing. At this cool place down in Florida called. Apparently, it's a pretty cool place, so. We got vote for, I guess there's 0. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're good.
I apologize, I'm a little.
The only bad thing is.
Left ear right now, so.
He didn't say that, he's quite positive.
So.
That'd give me seconds.
Libertarian.
Yeah.
Governor, 6, 0. Eight. 1, 1. 2, 0. Or Secretary of State. 6. 41, 1 write-in. 44, 1. Or. 44, 1, 10. Okay. Or. For Attorney General. 47, 1 write-in. 48. For. 63, we have 10. 42. 45. 8. 8. For Treasurer.
For Attorney General.
1 write-in.
Good luck to you, 20.
For County Recorder, we have 10. For Attorney, 10. For Republicans, District 1, 20.
Yeah.
For Governor, 18, in 1 write-in.
Yeah.
For Secretary of State, 18. For Auditor, we have 20. For Treasurer, we have 1 write-in. For Secretary of Ag, we have 4, 3, 5. 5.
Well, you're not 20.
0 write-in. For Attorney General, 1 write-in. For District 63, we have 20. For Porters Supervisors, 21.
Well, you got a great staff in there.
County Treasurer, 21. County Recorder, 1 write-in. County Attorney, 1 write-in.
4, 0, 0 writing.
Oh, I forgot. A lot more. We have two different ballots.
We've got to do something.
Turnout.
Yeah.
Okay, we're looking for 32.
32, 25, 46, 5. Next is Big Creek, the port city. 82, 17, 1 write-in. 86, 90, 91, 1 write-in. First district, 45, 33, 5, 0, 1 write-in. Governor, 2, 14, 16, 0, 7, 0. Secretary of State, 41, 29. For Auditor, 69. For Secretary of State, or Treasurer, 73. For Secretary of Ag, 1, 0. For Attorney General, 76. For Representative for District, 72. We have 9, 22, 31, 10. For Porters Supervisors, we have 15. 46. For Treasurer, we have 45. For County Recorder, we have 65. One other vote. For County Attorney, we have 66. For, and then Republicans, US First District, 38. Governor, 41. Secretary of State, 35. Auditor, 34. Treasurer, 0.
26.
6, 4, 8, 9, 11. For State Reps, District 72, 34. For Supervisors, 6. County Treasurer, 37. County Recorder, 1 write-in. County Attorney, 1 write-in. And. 6, 5, 7, 56 with 2 write-ins. 0, 4. 41. And all the rest are very. 2 write-ins. Treasurer. Attorney, 0, 1. 1 write-in for AG, 1.
Libertarian.
1 for House. Phil for 5.
1 write-in.
6, 1 write-in for Quarter, 1. Next is Blackhawk Hudson. Nothing.
Nothing.
Board for Precinct 3.
Okay, so US First District, Congress, 48, 37, 4.
Put in.
We're at the end of our list.
5, 5.
That good or bad?
Zero for the rest.
Did that on purpose. Abby is 14.
Auditor. Uh, Auditor, eighty-six. Second, uh, Treasurer, ninety.
Fourteen, eleven, nine.
Secretary of Ag, eighty-eight.
Two, six, seventeen, one, six.
Uh, District sixty, uh, eighty-four. Or Supervisors, sixty-three, sixty-five. Uh, Treasurer, five. Oh, yes, correct. Sixty-three, sixty-five, three, and one. So we have four, four write-ins, so.
One write-in.
Um, so.
Zero, one.
And then Treasurer, we have five.
White, six.
County Recorder, eighty-six. Uh, Attorney, eighty-four.
One for House.
And then, uh, Republicans, US District one, forty-eight.
Blank again.
Uh, Governor, fifty. Secretary of State, forty-six. Uh, Auditor of the State, forty-four.
Zero, nineteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen.
Treasurer, one write-in. Secretary of Ag, six, two, seven, twelve, twenty, zero write-in.
Zero, zero.
Attorney General, one write-in. Uh, State Rep, District sixty, forty-nine, zero write-ins. Board of Supervisors, uh, forty-eight.
Pete, you might as well call in lunch.
Yeah.
County Treasurer, forty-seven.
I hope not.
Abby, thirty-six.
One write-in. County Attorney, one write-in.
Simple, or Treasurer, zero write-ins, and zero.
Thirty-six, twenty-six, thirteen, ten, one, twenty-eight, forty-four, six.
Just making sure that you're wearing, I think, one of your. High rates in the Libertarian.
Fifty, eighty-one. Seventy-seven, seventy-eight, fifty-one. Seventy-six, seventy-eight with one write-in. Seventy-four with two write-ins, seventy-nine, one write-in. Five-oh, five-four. Three write-ins for Treasurer, seventy-five.
Oh, two for Jack, okay.
Seventy-six.
Zero, two.
Blum, thirteen, Reynolds, twelve, Pete, thirteen, Mosman, thirteen. Nothing for Treasurer. Ag is five, three, two, zero.
Ward, I, precinct three.
One write-in for AG, one for Senate, one for House. Belka, thirteen, Schmidt, thirteen. One write-in for Recorder, one for Attorney.
Eighty-three, fifty-four.
Again, we got one vote.
One, twelve, eleven, one, zero write-in. We got seventy-two, fifty-seven, one write-in.
Pardon?
One twenty-seven, one. One thirty-three, one thirty-nine, one twenty-eight.
You still want me to roll it up, don't you?
Yeah.
And I wish you would've told them to roll it up so that the top was on.
I know.
But, you know, it's the work they have to do.
They had to do it, they probably wouldn't do it that way.
County Attorney.
Okay, we're looking at four, five.
Four, five.
We're looking for Abby at thirty.
Okay.
For the Republican, we got forty-six, one, forty-four, one.
With one write-in.
Twenty-eight, two, five, zero.
Oh, oh, two eighteen, okay.
One, fourteen, ten, fourteen, one write.
Four, nine, eighty-eight, two.
Team.
Zero write.
Secretary of State.
One oh-one, twenty-two.
Ninety-one.
Auditor.
Forty-nine.
Rogers, forty-six, one write-in.
Treasurer, forty-eight.
Fifty-one.
One write-in.
It's tucked in, the others will lose, this one's tucked in.
Fifty-one, sixteen.
Uh, Attorney General, seventeen, one, one write-in.
Treasurer, ag.
Uh.
Three, two, nine.
And, uh, State Senate, District thirty-one. Forty-nine, one write-in. Uh, State District sixty, forty-nine.
Gate Quarter, sixteen.
Board of Supervisors, Attorney, thirty-six, and nothing.
Thirty-four.
For.
Uh, Treasurer, County Treasurer, one write-in. Uh, County Recorder, forty-nine. County Attorney, forty-nine. Uh, until the Republicans, uh, US District one, fifteen. Governor, eighteen. Secretary of State.
Okay, let's see what we got this time, I think we're looking for Abby at twenty-seven.
Auditor, thirteen, four.
Nine, zero, one, zero.
Secretary of Ag.
Zero, three, four, three, one, one, zero.
Four, eight, zero.
Secretary of State, five, five, zero.
Attorney General.
Twenty-seven, eight, two, five.
Twelve, zero, thirteen.
Zero, nine, twenty-five, zero, seven.
The State Representative.
So we get down to forty-seven. Zero, four, thirty-one, and for his.
Thirty-five.
Board of Supervisors.
Seven, Board of Supervisors.
Fifteen, seventeen, zero write-ins. County Treasurer.
Four write-ins.
Treasurer.
Thirty-six, thirty-four, one write-in.
Quarter.
Four. Four, zero, three. No write-ins for Treasurer.
The tag lay a one.
Ag, zero, one, one, zero, two.
Republican.
It's like zero.
We have Blum, twenty, zero write-ins.
Five.
Twenty, zero write-ins, eighteen.
Five, no write-ins.
For Recorder.
Sixteen, zero write-ins.
Zero on the next one.
Treasurer, zero.
The next one.
Secretary of Ag, culture, two, one, three, seven.
I have twenty-eight as the first one for Abby.
Zero write-ins.
Unless.
Uh, Attorney General, zero write-ins.
Enter twice here.
And then we have Fisher, eighteen, Belka, nineteen.
Okay, Abby.
County Treasurer, nineteen. County Recorder, one write-in. County Attorney, one write-in.
Can we explain why it's still one?
Libertarian, Harvey, and.
Harvey this morning.
One more.
All zeros, four.
Yeah.
Five, one.
Twenty-five, nine, five, one, two, ten, twenty-one, three, three, one.
Ready for another one.
Another four, twelve. Thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-one, thirty-four.
It's like folding a map, it's not thirty-five.
Morning, Albert and Mike. Marine.
Eight, write-ins for Treasurer.
Democratic, trying to think of now. Forty, forty-six, nineteen, two, oh, zero write-ins.
No write-ins.
Governor, five, eleven.
Zero, one, two.
Forty-three, three, seven, one, zero write-ins.
That's your last support sitting right there.
And twenty-six, thirty-six, zero write-ins. Uh, fifty-nine, zero write-ins. Sixty-two, six, sixty-two.
Nothing on the other.
Sixty-five, zero write-ins.
No, but that, no.
Zero write-ins.
Okay, we're on the Cedar Falls Board, one precinct, one.
District sixty-two, we got fifty-seven, zero write-ins. And BD, thirty-four, White, fifty, zero write-ins.
Yeah.
Three, four. Uh, Con, there's four write-ins.
US District.
County Recorder, sixty-one.
Fifty-seven, twenty-five, three, five.
Forty is what we're looking for.
Republicans.
Governor, one.
Blum, twenty-six, zero write-ins.
Four.
Reynolds, twenty-five, one write-in.
Two.
Secretary of State, twenty-six, zero write-ins.
Forty-three, forty-one.
All write-ins.
Auditor, seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Treasurer, eighty-two.
Zero for Wilburn.
Thirty-five, seventy-seven, seventy-five. One write-in.
Attorney General.
Seventy-eight, seventy-six, seventy-eight.
State Rep, District fifty-nine, eighty-six, forty-six. Board of Supervisors.
Two write-ins for all Districts.
Forty-eight.
Seventy-three with one write.
Supervisors, Trump, twenty-seven, one write.
Blum, seventeen. Treasurer, twenty, five write-ins.
Recorder, two write-ins.
Recorder, seventy-four.
Auditor, twenty. Libertarian.
Seventy-six. Republicans, uh, District one. Uh, twenty.
Three, no write-ins.
One write-in.
Rest of.
Uh, Governor, twenty-two, for. Secretary of State, for four, twenty-one. Uh, it's.
Auditor.
Nineteen. Uh, Treasurer, one write-in.
Right.
Belt, twenty-three. Secretary of Ag, five, two, one, two, twenty-one, ten. And zero write-ins.
Tag lay a one.
Attorney General, one write-in.
Evansville, more, one.
Uh, State Representative.
My name come up?
One write-in.
Yeah.
County Attorney. Board of Supervisors. Libertarian, eighteen.
Libertarian.
County Treasurer.
Under Libertarian, open, zero.
All, uh, for thirty-seven.
Twenty-two.
County Attorney, one write-in.
Sixteen, two, twenty, zero.
Zero, zero, twenty-three, six, three.
That's it, why'd you leave?
Twenty-one, thirty-seven.
Hey, more than ninety-seven, three equal voters. St. Gerald, I only got eighty-five in the, so twelve of us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, so, yeah. I don't think they're really on, five write-ins for Treasurer, sixty-two.
Yeah.
Sixty-two. Sixteen with one write-in. Reynolds, nineteen.
District twenty-two.
Okay, Cedar Falls, Board one, precinct two.
Thirty-seven, egg, zero write-in.
Cause it's.
Just here, yeah.
White, thirty, thirteen, for House. Yeah.
Trump, sixteen. Sixteen for Schmidt.
You have.
Treasurer, two write-ins.
How do we got two? Two votes for Porter.
No, fifty-six.
Thirteen.
Yeah, I'm just surprised.
Twenty-six.
Libertarians didn't write in.
Governor, four, seventy-five, one twenty.
The only Libertarian I talked to.
Eleven.
Eight, twenty-three.
Two.
Fifteen.
One write-in. Secretary of State.
Fourteen.
One fifty-seven, sixty.
Treasurer.
And one write-in. Uh, Auditor.
Culture.
Uh, two fifteen, and two write-ins.
And we have zero, zero, zero write-ins.
Treasurer, uh.
They're going to get a chair.
Two write-ins.
County Treasurer.
Uh, Secretary of Ag, two sixteen, quarters of write-ins.
I think so, but.
You were there.
Really, you know.
Twenty-seven.
So crazy anymore.
District, uh, State District fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine is what we're looking for. Fifty-nine, forty-nine, eight.
Board of Supervisors.
The tag lay a one, seventy-six.
Five, nine. One write-in.
Yeah.
Fifty-nine.
One County Treasurer, nineteen write-ins. Uh, County Recorder, two oh-seven, one write-in.
One, sixteen.
County Attorney, two oh-nine, three write-ins.
Four, two.
Eight, write-ins for Treasurer, one ten.
Uh, Republicans, US District one, uh, thirty-one.
Thirty-one with one write-in.
Governor, thirty-one. Two write-ins.
Attorney State. Zero, one.
Uh, State Auditor, thirty-four.
Zero, seven, twenty-eight.
No write-ins.
Treasurer of State, five, write-ins. Uh, Secretary of Ag, nine, thirty-one, zero.
Two write-ins.
Five, fourteen, zero.
Nothing.
Attorney General, four write-ins.
District thirty-one, thirty-nine.
District fifty-nine, four write-ins.
Uh, we're.
Thirty-two, one write-in. Uh, Treasurer, thirty-four. County Recorder.
Yeah.
County Attorney, four write-ins. And. Um, Libertarian for Governor, one, one, zero write-ins.
Yeah, we're looking for ninety-one for Abby.
Eight, eight.
We have. Ninety, six, three, ten, can.
Attorney General, one write-in.
Three, thirty, two, thirty-eight, one, one write-in. One oh-seven, forty-six.
Belka, one write-in.
One, five, six, one.
County Treasurer.
One fifty-eight, one write-in.
One, no write-out.
Two write-ins.
Quarter, one write-in, three.
Yeah.
No write-ins, one, five, one, two write-ins. One twenty-six, one oh-eight, one write-in. Nine write-ins for Treasurer, one, five, seven, one, five, five.
Governor, we had one vote.
Blum, forty-one, forty-three, forty-one, forty-two.
Yeah.
One write-in for Treasurer, ag, nine, three, seven, three, eighteen. AG, two write-ins. Rogers, forty, Trump, thirty-nine, eight write-ins.
We've got Ward one precinct three, Cedar Falls.
Two write-ins for Recorder, two for, eight, Attorney. Uh, one vote each for this district. We got a battle there.
One twenty-four, fifty-five, three.
District one, sixteen.
Two, one hundred.
Governor, three, fifty-two.
Governor, ninety-two.
Libertarian, ten.
Each other, forty-one.
Yeah.
Right. Attorney State, fourteen.
Uh, Sixty State, one twenty-five.
Yes, Auditor, twenty-six.
Five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Auditor, one sixty-three.
That's a rule.
Treasurer, one seventy-three. State Ag, one sixty-eight.
One for, one right in. One right in for Governor.
Looking for fifty-seven for Abby.
District fifty-nine.
We got another report from the Libertarian Party.
Board of Supervisors.
Fifty-seven, thirty-six, one, seven, one, twenty-three.
County Treasurer, twenty.
Libertarian, the next one.
Forty-one, forty-seven. Eighty-two.
You've can't.
I've never heard of the people.
Republicans, uh, County Attorney.
Seven, seventy-four, sixty-six.
That's a big deal for.